Audio check.
Commissioner, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And your visuals there as well. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioner.
Hello, hello, hello.
Hey.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening. I don't know which Commissioner you're saying good evening to, but I'll say okay.
To all of them.
Cool. Very cool.
Good evening, everybody. This is Jonathan. Thank you.
Jonathan.
Thank you, Mr. Benio for the documents this afternoon. I appreciate that.
Okay, it's 6:30, everyone. Ready to start our commission meeting? City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Castillo.
Here.
Commissioner Good.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Seifel.
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Good, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Republic.
which stands one nation, indivisible, universal, for all.
Well, thank you, everybody. And I'm cold. I don't know if everybody else is, but it's been a cold morning. I guess we have to get one of those now and then. Before I start our presentation, I just wanted to do a shout out to Janet Moses. I just found out tonight that Janet's been in the hospital for a month. Bill Moses is the director over at the Century Village. She had an accident and she's been hospitalized for almost a month. So Janet and Bill, our thoughts are with you. Just wanted to make sure I said that. Thanks a lot. All right, I have a proclamation for Rick Case. For Rick Case Bikes for Kids Days. But before I read the proclamation, I'd like to just say a few words about Rick Case. Everybody knows Rick Case. He's been so good to this city in his bike days and Stan Bostick and his wife Rita. Rick was a wonderful husband, father, grandfather boss, and humanitarian, and with his passing, he'll be sorely missed. It was an honor to recognize him and Rita each year for their Bikes to Kids program. And although he's not here this year to accept the proclamation, I know his legacy will live on and it will never be forgotten. And I made the comment one time that we want to get rid of all the cars and just have bikes. And Rick didn't like that. So Rick, yeah, our thoughts are with you, Rick, and here's our proclamation. Rick Case, Bikes for Kids Day. Whereas 38 years ago, the Bikes for Kids program was started by Rita and Rick Case in conjunction with the local Boys and Girls Club to distribute new and pre-owned bicycles during the holiday season to those children whose holiday may be less than bright. And whereas the program teaches kids a valuable lesson about the joys of giving as well as providing much appreciated gift for children who might otherwise hope to receive such a present. And whereas throughout the program's history, more than 125,000 bikes have been given, donated Cleveland, Atlanta, and South Florida. And whereas this contribution is significant in terms of effort and spirit by all who participate in this worthwhile project. And whereas it is hoped that thousands more cycles were received and given to deserving children again this year. Now therefore, I frank see orders, Mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, to hereby proclaim December 2nd, 2020, as Rick Case Bikes for Kids. Commend those hard-working young people and Rita and Rick Case for their unselfish dedication to this program and to encourage our residents to support this outstanding project in every way possible. We also celebrate the 38th anniversary of the Bikes for Kids program. Rick, Rita, everyone, Stan, congratulations. Thanks for all you do for us. All right.
Seifel, Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just, I thank you for doing that proclamation. I can't, you know, think of anybody more, much more deserving than Rick and Rita for what they've done. And certainly, we all know that there's part of their, part of who they are and their legacy that they've left is, you know, and a worldwide auto dealer who established and many businesses throughout the country and overseas and therefore provided jobs for families and, you know, things like that. But I think their real legacy of them is not their auto dealerships, but what they've done in all of these different communities that they have sort of called home by, sort of by proxy and everything that they've done for families. They do for young, they do for old. The ranch roams, the bicycles, the food, you know, the food drives, all of that that they do. That's clearly and truly the legacy of them, of that family. And we're just very happy to see that they are continuing to go on with all of those, all of those good objectives that have been sent out. And we certainly appreciate it and look forward to many more years of receiving, our families receiving those well wishes from them. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well said. Announcing items to be pulled from the agenda, Ms. City Clerk.
No items, Mayor.
Items at the request of the public?
No items at the request of the public. However, we do have several requests to speak at the appropriate time for item 15.
Okay. Announcing a board and committee appointments.
No announcements.
All right, we have one through.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry. City Attorney, please give us a little legal advice.
I'd be happy to. Give you some of the rules of the road governing tonight's meeting specifically. As you know, Governor DeSantis entered an order back, an executive order in March, number 20-69, which actually authorized virtual meetings and virtual quorums. That order of the governor expired on November the 1st of this year. The City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines adopted an emergency ordinance number 1952 in an emergency session on November the 18th of 2020 to resume virtual quorum public meetings due to the continued rise in local cases of the COVID-19 coronavirus and the ongoing health alerts and Centers for Disease Control recommendations on social distancing, wearing of face coverings, and a limit on public gatherings to slow the spread of the virus. As a consequence and result of that finding by the City Commission, the City of Pembroke Pines in special session is hosting this meeting consistent with ordinance number 1952 as a virtual meeting, virtual quorum. And for the record, under the Communications Media Technology Guidelines this commission adopted back in April, they will apply to this meeting as it currently exists. The main thrust of which is to make certain that each member of the commission can interactively hear each other, see each other, listen to, and interact with the public as well. Having said that, Mr. Benio, Jonathan Benio, is actually running, running the controls this evening as he has in the past. And these are the rules of the road with regard to public access. This commission embraces, supports, and will be happy to coordinate all public input in the context of your meeting this evening under the Sunshine Law and the laws that relate to public access to public meetings. The notice of the meeting was properly noticed and published by the City Clerk consistent with the statute governing public meetings. The public can participate in this meeting in the following ways. They can call in. The number that's been provided and has been posted is the following. It's 1-408-418-9388. And the meeting number, the access code is 1-73-460-3984. Repeat, the phone number is 1-408-418-9388. And the actual meeting number, which is being shown to you on the screen, is 1-73-463-83984. The manner in which the public input will be allowed and has been permitted in the past, subject, of course, to the three-minute rule, is that at the time, public input or comments are provided. Number one, comments which are submitted via email will be read into the record. Number two, the public who have preregistered, and there have been some people, Mr. Benio will confirm that, who have preregistered and accessed the meeting via the WebEx platform, which is the platform we're currently under, will be identified and told to unmute their phone to comment on the item at that particular moment. The person will be asked to identify themselves. They will press the button, star three, to raise your hand. Mr. Benio, who's somewhere in the building, I believe, will recognize the hand being raised. And then when the person is notified of that situation, just tell us for the record, tell the clerk your name, first name, last name, and your address for the record. And number three, the public may also access the meeting who did not preregister and have called in to be identified by the area code first and then the three numbers of the telephone number, for example, 954-849-XXXX. At that time, the call-in user will be unmuted by Mr. Benio and asked to identify themselves again by giving us their first name, last name, and their address. All public comments, whether they be given by phone or read into the record by the clerk or force limited by the three-minute rule. It is, again, it is the purpose, the intent of the mayor and the commission and the city administration to make certain that as a virtual meeting under CMT guidelines, that the members of the public who would choose to participate may either listen to the meeting, they may dial into the meeting, they may connect to the meeting or otherwise communicate in that way and are being given free and unfettered access to the public meeting of the City Commission, which would prefer that that be done and is being done in accordance with ordinance number 1952. Mayor and Commission, thank you for your listening and appreciate the indulgence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, City Attorney. Well done, as usual.
Thank you.
All right, we have consent agenda. Item 1 through 13. What is the pleasure?
Seifel, seven.
Mr. Seifel, item seven. Okay, any others? Okay, I don't hear any others, so we'll go on with items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. I need a motion. So move. What was that?
Castillo.
Okay, we have to remember, announce your name first. Commissioner Castillo makes the motion. Is there a second?
Seifel.
Commissioner Seifel seconds the motion. Discussion. The only discussion I have is one of the items, I'm not going to pull them. But the agreement between Broward County Schools and the City of Pembroke Pines. Want to reach out to School Board Member Patty Good. She's been really helping us a lot in that. I don't want to pull the item, but thank you, Ms. Good. All right, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Mayor Ordus.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Commissioner Seifel, item seven, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to reject all bids for PSPW-20-04, Construction of Equipment and Machinery Building and to authorize the advertisement of PSPW-20-17, Rebid of Construction of Equipment and Machinery Building.
All right, is there a second?
Castillo, second.
Commissioner Castillo, second the motion. Commissioner Seifel, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor. I had one quick question. If we could get some explanation, probably maybe from City Manager. On the first page, item four, or maybe it's from Public Services, I'm not sure who would answer. Public Services Department determined that proposals received were much higher than the estimated cost and is requiring that the bid be re-advertized and a reduced scope of work. While I'm, I'm, that's fine. I have no problem with that. What I should find out, what is this that they're looking to reduce on the scope of work?
Yeah, City Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Buckland should be on the line that can respond to it, or Mr. Gomes, one or the other.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Steve Buckland, Public Services. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, as what we're, we reduce on the scope by taking away some of the infrastructure of the building, like the electrical component, the plumbing components, some of the, some of the landscaping and excavation services for the exterior of the building to get it down so that fits in our budget. Those items could be added later by city forces as needed. But the biggest need right now is just to have the coverage of the building to keep the equipment out of the weather. So that, that is why we did reduce the scope of work.
Just trying to get.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
That won't.
Thank you. Does answer my question, but Mr. Buckland, the actual building structure is still the same size that we were originally looking at. You've just removed a few of the items you, you mentioned, correct?
Correct. The actual physical structure of the building is exactly the same.
Okay, because you, you based that upon your needs for covering equipment, so I was hoping that wasn't changing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all, Mayor.
All right. And further discussion, item seven. Hearing none. Call a roll, City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Seifel.
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Mayor Ordus.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, first reading ordinance, City Attorney, item 14, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 14, for the record, is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2020-20 on first reading. It is proposed ordinance number 2020, is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending Chapter 34 of the City's Code of Ordinance, entitled Employment Policies, by creating Section 34.185, entitled City Holidays, specifically recognizing Juneteenth as a city holiday, providing for conflict, separability, and providing for an effective date. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. It's now on the floor for consideration.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Good.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Second?
Second.
I'll say, Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo, second. All right, discussion. Commissioner Good.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. As we had spoken at the last meeting, this ordinance provides for a recognition in particular, a celebration for the Juneteenth, which is the emancipation of African-Americans. And I am very, very proud of my colleagues for joining me at the last meeting and asking for this ordinance to be brought forward. I think this is a great service to our community as well as to those within our city to allow us to reflect on such an important thing that has happened in, in our history. And I only hope that not only do we, you know, recognize this through a holiday for the city, but also where we would do some other type of programming that would also bring the attention of the struggles of the African-American people throughout the course of history. So thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for allowing.
Thank you, Commissioner Good, for bringing that to us. And a discussion on item 14. Hearing none. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel.
Yes.
Mayor Ordus.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, the second and final reading is yet to be set, but it will be reasonably soon in connection with the advertisement, actually, of the ordinances required by the statute. So it'll be soon.
Very good. Thank you, City Attorney. Please read item 15 into the record.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Item number 15, for the record, is a, is a second reading of the final, of the ordinance 2020-16. Proposed ordinance number 2020-16 is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, modifying the Pines Village Market Mixed Use Development, that's MXD District Design Guidelines, for the approximately 27-acre parcel of the Pines Village Market property, generally located south of Pines Boulevard and east of Dyke Road by amending the Pines Village Market MXD Design Guidelines to allow the development of up to 165 townhomes and modifying setback, walkway, parking, garage use, and fencing requirements as set forth in Exhibit A, authorizing the use of up to 40 flexibility units, providing for codification, providing for conflicts and separability, and providing for an effective date. Item number 20, 15, 2020-16 is now on the floor, Mayor and Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion for item 15? So move. Moved by Commissioner Good. Is there a second? There's a second item 15. All right, I'll second it for discussion. Anyone like to speak on item? Mr. Mealy, are you on the horn?
Yes, Mayor, I am.
Would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you. So as the, as was read by the City Attorney, this is the second reading of the ordinance. We had the first reading last month.
Mr. Mealy, would you please tell the record who you are and in what capacity you speak and whose behalf, please? I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry about that.
It's okay, no problem.
Sorry, I should have done that from the beginning. So Dennis Mealy.
Thank you.
200 East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, on behalf of the applicant. As mentioned, I represent the applicant for this, this agenda item and also number 16, which is the plant note amendment that accompanies the resuming request. So we had the first reading last month. At that time, as you know, we reduced the number of units from 170 to 165, as was read in the ordinance for tonight. We also have added the $500,000 contribution for the traffic signal at Dyke Road or Seventh Street, at Seventh Street. If that traffic signal is not warranted, that money would be used by the city for any other traffic improvement in the city that you deem to be necessary. We would pay that amount at the time of the first building permit for the approved site plan. The, also, the additional conditions that were included in the Fourth Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement that was approved in 2013, that also provides for a $500 contribution per approved for the city's Affordable Housing Fund, also to be paid at the time of the first building permit. There was also a condition included in that Fourth Amendment to the agreement that's also included for this MXD amendment, and that is for the construction of the perimeter buffering and landscaping to be done early in the project. So that is also a condition. If I could just go over a couple of quick items. And I think we have some slides to show. Is it possible we could pull those up? I won't show all of them. I'll just skip to the ones where I want to make a couple of quick points. Okay, so could we go to, there we go. So obviously, that's the property location. We go to the next slide, please. This is the former use. The postal service facility was a 345,000-square-foot building, 11,000 trips a day. Now, another thing that we've looked at, especially in light of recent rainfall and drainage and so on, we looked at our, with the new plan as compared to the old postal service site. And we have almost an acre more of open space than they had when the postal service site was there. Also, I want to point out that the open space has been increased for the residential portion of the property above what it was on the approved 125-unit single-family zero-lot line plan. The open space percentage on that single-family zero-lot line plan was 18.6. 6% of the site, the open space now on the 165-town home plan is 21.31% of the site. So we've increased the open space over the amount that was there when it was a post office. We've also increased the open space over the amount that was there when the 125 zero-lot line single-family homes were approved. The reason that's important is because more open space makes more available area for water retention as well as for recreational use. Go to the next slide, please. So this is the currently approved MXD plan. The northern half of it is the commercial portion. That does not change. That stays as was approved. The southern portion is the approved 125 single-family zero-lot line units. And we'll ask you to notice, because this came up at the previous meeting, that on that approved plan, if you look at the bottom portion of this drawing, you will see a line of homes going all the way along the southern property line. I believe there's 30 some odd homes there. And that was a concern that we had heard on that plan when it was originally approved in terms of the view from the south in the Pembroke Shore's neighborhood. If we can go to the next slide, please. These are previous plans that we don't really need to talk about, but were based on prior designs. But of, of course, that's not what we're doing. Go to the next slide, please. So this is the plan that was used for the purpose of the Fourth Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement that was approved in 2019. That is the 182-unit plan. As we worked with staff, providing for site plans and the MXD rezoning, this number was reduced to 170, and I think that's probably shown on the next slide, please. And this, this plan was the one that was recommended for approval by staff, presented to the Planning and Zoning Board and to the City Commission. And as you know, at the last meeting, we reduced that to 165 units. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So this shows you the 165-unit plan. We increased the open space, reduced the density. Also, I want to point out, we improved the cross-access, vehicular cross-access between this property and the commercial property, so people could travel back and forth, on foot, on a bike. foot, on a bike, or in a car, between the residential and the commercial without going out to Dykes Road. If we can go to the next slide, please. And I know I'm doing this quickly, but you know, this is the second reading, if you want me to spend more time on anything, I will. This is showing you, the areas in yellow are areas where we've been able to put in significant amounts of guest parking. We know that it has been a concern of the city on other townhome projects, that there is not enough guest parking, so we've really loaded up on the guest parking to make sure there's enough parking for everyone, and we've distributed around the site where you can see all these areas in yellow, so no matter who you're visiting, you can find guest space in close proximity to the person you're visiting. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is the cross access that we've approved, I won't spend more time on it, other than to say that it's been signed off by all the engineers, both for our side and the city. Go to the next slide, please. Drainage. So, this is something that you may recall, it took us over a year and a half to negotiate with the owner of the Grand Palms Golf Course to be able to provide this very important drainage connection. So, you see at the top of the drawing, the culvert that goes from the post office site into the northwesternmost lake on the Grand Palms Golf Course, and then you'll see at the bottom of the drawing, when the county built Pembroke Road, they put a culvert underneath the road, but it was only in the road right of way. So, we had to negotiate an easement from the owner of the Grand Palms Golf Course to connect the southernmost lake on the golf course to that pipe. That pipe now goes under Pembroke Road, and it provides for an outfall for this area down to the C nine canal. The C nine canal is that large canal on the Broward-Dade County Line. The reason this was so important is because water was kind of bottling up in the Grand Palms Golf Course and had no way to get out. So, we were able to put in this culvert. It is my understanding that in the very severe rainstorms we've had in the last month, that this area drained better than it did before. It's also my understanding that Grand Palms did not have some of the problems with flushing toilets and other issues that may have existed further west in the city, because we did not have the level of water stacking up on the property in Grand Palms because of the very thing that was done, this culvert that was installed, providing for that connection to the south. And that culvert was opened earlier this year, but much earlier than the summer rainfalls that we had. So, I wanted to show you that, that's something we've already done, but I think it's important that we did what we could to improve the drainage for that entire basin, everything that you see outlined in red, from Pembroke Road up to Pines Boulevard, from basically Dykes Road over to I seventy-five. That whole basin was able to have an improved drainage situation because of this culvert connection. Also, the fact that it took us so long to negotiate this with the owner of the golf course is one of the reasons this project was delayed as long as it was. If we go to the next slide, please. So, traffic comparisons are always important, so what you'll see here, this is the same information that I showed a month ago, that at the top of the trips associated with the post office facility that was there, you see the eleven thousand seven hundred trips a day, you see the morning rush hour, seven hundred and thirty-six, the afternoon rush hour, nine seventy-four. If you look right below that, you'll see the traffic that would have been associated with the one hundred and twenty-five single-family zero lot line residential units, and of course, the traffic is less than the post office was. Now, if you go down to the bottom, you will see, I guess, the third line, Table Three, you'll see the traffic associated with the one hundred and sixty-five townhomes. And then at the bottom, you'll see the comparisons. So, I look at the two bottom lines there, where you're looking at the post office as compared to the one hundred and sixty-five townhomes, and you see a significant reduction in daily traffic, morning rush hour and afternoon rush hour. And then the bottom line is the one hundred and twenty-five single-family zero lot line homes versus the one hundred and sixty-five townhomes. The average daily traffic number is slightly higher, twenty-eight trips, but the important thing is the morning rush hour and afternoon rush hour are a reduction in traffic with one hundred and sixty-five townhomes as compared to one hundred and twenty-five single-family zero lot line homes. Now, I want to point out that people have asked many times, where do these traffic numbers come from? How do we know they're accurate? Some of them may seem counterintuitive, but I will tell you that all of these traffic comparisons are done the way they are always done, based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. I've been practicing in this area since nineteen eighty-nine, and before that, I was in planning and administration in government, and the I T E is the gold standard. Now, I will tell you that all of these numbers were prepared by our traffic engineer, they were all reviewed by the city's engineers, and everyone has agreed that these are the correct numbers. So, I want to point out that these are the numbers that are always used in these situations to compare one use to another, and we did them the same way, they've always been done. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know our traffic engineer is on the line tonight, if there's any questions for him, and I know you have your own engineers at the city, if you have questions for them. If we can go to the next slide, please. So, this is again just showing you the commercial on the top in the black and white, and the residential on the bottom in color, and just some of the characteristics that we've looked into here, the drainage improvement, the culverts, the cross access between the residential and the commercial, so that it would decrease trips going out onto, onto Dykes Road, and then we just show the parking and the guest parking. If we can go to the next slide, please. Now, this is the road improvements that we talked about on the first reading, Pembroke Road and for the connector. I don't have anything additional to say beyond what we talked about last time. And the next slide, please. These are the same mitigation area buffers we showed, so this is the buffer between Pembroke Shores and our closest homes at the south portion of the site, and you see that we have approximately four hundred feet of separation between our homes and the homes in Pembroke Shores. If we go to the next slide, please. And then, this is just a depiction of, if you're in Pembroke Shores and looking northward, what do you see? How does it look? And I know this drawing is a little bit small, but you can see that the vegetation basically blocks out the view of these new townhomes, other than perhaps the roof lines. Now, the reason I point that out is on the one hundred and twenty-five single-family zero lot line plan, there was a row of homes uninterrupted all the way along the southern property line. So, even though there are fewer homes on the property in that plan than in this plan, they were much more visible from the neighbors to the south than the way we've done it now by moving the units away from the southern property line and not having that uninterrupted row of homes along the southern property line as was included in the approved one hundred and twenty-five unit plan. If we move to the next slide, please. So, this is the buffer between us and Grand Palms, and it's showing you the distance to the closest home to the closest home in Grand Palms, approximately one hundred and thirty-five feet. I do want to point out that at the Planning and Zoning Board and at the first reading of this item, there was a discussion about the work we were doing with Grand Palms, and pleased to report that we have entered into an agreement with the Grand Palms homeowners' Association, and they are supporting this application, and we are helping them to address some traffic concerns they have within Grand Palms that are really not associated with our project. Well, in all of these cases, the City of Pembroke Pines has set up a system where before you file an application, you meet with, or you offer to meet with, all homeowners associations within five hundred feet of the property. As part of that process that you have us undertake, we met with the Grand Palms HOA Board, and we asked them what their concerns were. They told us what they were, and we said, how can we help? And they told us how we can help, and we agreed to do it. And that's why they have agreed that they are supportive of what we're doing based on the help that we're providing. If we can go to the next slide, please. So, this is just to show that when you, when you look at one of these townhouse plans as a whole, you really can't see how the buildings move in and out based on the type of unit that's put on each lot. So, we just show you this building so that you understand it's a typical seven-unit building with different floor plans, because what we do is when someone comes in and wants to buy, we say, what unit do you want? What lot would you like to be on? So, every building is a little bit different based on which lot and which unit the person selects. And so, you see, all the units again have a single-car garage with a two-car driveway, and the units are various sizes with various elevations, so it's not just a big rectangle, that's what we're trying to show here. If we can go to the next slide, please. So, those are all the items I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and at the end of the public comment period, I would like the opportunity to respond as appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Commissioners, any discussion?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Who's this?
Schwartz.
Okay, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mealy, I have a question regarding the, regarding Grand Palms. I understand that there, someone has their microphone on, and I'm hearing myself twice. I apologize, Mayor, I'm just waiting for people to mute their mics, so we don't have feedback.
Could everybody please mute their mics? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mealy, Grand Palms is going to have a Pembroke Road entrance or exit within the next two years, which is going to occur before any of these potentially built units are going to be ready to move in, is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
Is it also true, is it, I have a question, Mayor, for the city engineer?
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, Carl Kennedy is on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, good evening. Mr. Mealy made representation that your division signed off on the traffic numbers, the information that was presented this evening, is it true and correct?
Yes, those are the numbers that are acceptable for these types of uses.
All right. Mr. Kennedy, several months ago, FDOT came to the City Commission with a I seventy-five Pines Boulevard interchange improvement plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, Sheridan Street and I seventy-five and Sheridan West has recently gone under construction, and widening of Sheridan Street has occurred, is that correct?
Yes, that project is correct, at Dykes.
Mr. Kennedy, the county, through the penny tax, health tax initiative, will be making Pembroke Road improvements within the next two years, commencing that project, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, FDOT and/or the county are also making similar improvements to Pines Boulevard west of seventy-five during that time period, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, do you say that there is a plan to mitigate traffic based on the county and FDOT proposals that have been presented to this commission within the last twelve months?
Yes, there are projects that will improve traffic flow in the western portion of the city.
Mr. Kennedy, is it true that FDOT and the county has proposed funding to improve those mitigations, to pay for these proposed projects for traffic mitigation?
Yes, the Pembroke Road widening and extension project is approximately ninety million dollars, and the Pembroke Road widening project is approximately eleven million dollars.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, is it true that Grand Palms did not have any toilet flushing issues during the recent flooding events that occurred in our city?
I have not been able to confirm that, I'm still waiting for the report from the utility department on, on all of the sewer backup issues in Pembroke Shores and Grand Palms area.
Do you believe that Mr. Mealy's presentation that watershed improvement, drainage improvement as a result of the culvert had a positive impact on the city with the recent rain event?
Yes, the culvert would have had a positive impact on the, on this area of the city and this, this area of the drainage district.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Mike Stam.
Mr. Stam?
Yes, sir, Mike Stam, Planning and Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mr. Stam, how are you?
Doing well, sir.
Mr. Stam, how long have you been our planning director?
Approximately six years, seven years.
How long have you been working with us in the planning department?
Over fifteen years.
In the last fifteen years, Mr. Stam, have you worked on or presented to the commission a comp plan?
We have come back to the commission over the years with amendments to our comp plan, where we address various policies for housing, density, transit, open space, those types of items.
Mr. Stam, for the benefit of the public, can you, can you tell us what a comp plan is?
The, the city has a comprehensive plan that is a function of not only the city, but the county and also the state. Our comprehensive plan basically outlines how we develop over time, and there's various sections in there for recreation and open space, drainage, well, excuse me, not drainage, recreation, open space, utilities, standards for various land use categories, interlocal agreements with housing and education. It's a, it's, it's an overall development plan that guides how we build.
Mr. Stam, is this something that's unique to Pembroke Pines, or is this required by the county or state?
To the best of my knowledge, everybody in the state of Florida has a comprehensive plan, whether it's either the county, the city individually, or the cities through the county. Our city is, you know, Broward County is a charter county, so Broward County does have a little bit of authority over our comp plan.
So, does that comp plan get reviewed by the county or at the planning council?
The comp plan, if, if there's an amendment to the comp plan, not only does the city review that amendment, those amendments will go to the planning council and can be also reviewed by the state. We also do what's called land use plan amendments, and depending on the size of the land use plan amendment, those could be reviewed by not only the city, the county, and the state, or just the city and the county.
So, in the last sixteen years, has any elected official from the City of Pembroke Pines served on the planning council that reviewed Pembroke Pines' comp plan?
I can't speak to all sixteen years, I do know that the city has had representation on the planning council over the years.
And as far as the comp plan itself, is it fair to say that in the last sixteen years, there's been at least twenty-five times in the last sixteen years that the comp plan has come in front of the elected body for approval?
Various amendments to the comp plan and/or land use plan amendments have come to the city since the institution of our comp plan. If we change the land use on a property, that is technically a comp plan amendment, it's a land use plan amendment, so we bring them in. When we change policies in the comp plan, those items go before the commission and are reviewed by the commission.
Mr. Stam, do you, in your fifteen years that you've been here, have you, do you recall a vote where the commission didn't approve a comp plan that was presented to the, to the City Commission?
The City Commission has voted not to support specific amendments to the land use map. I don't recall, again, in my term as director, Mr. Frank was there before me, where the commission has voted not to approve amendments to the comp plan itself. You know, we, we do various amendments regularly, you know, dealing with water, dealing with new policies that the county adopts, affordable housing, all those elements, we, we do those things regularly.
Mr. Stam, when an application comes in for any development, y- your job as the planning department is to review to see if it's compatible with the commission-approved comp plan, is that correct?
When we review applications, we look for compatibility and the technical review against the city's comprehensive plan and the city's code of ordinances, the zoning code. We review all applications as they're submitted, um, that's our job. We have a responsibility to review them as they're submitted.
And does the planning and zoning board also have a responsibility of reviewing that?
The planning and zoning board serves as the local planning agency for the city of Pembroke Pines. On elements of the comp plan and the code of ordinances specifically, like a zoning change or a land use change, they are a recommending body to the city commission.
So with respect to this project, um, is it a true and accurate statement to say that the only way that the city could have moved forward with the purchase and sale of the land for this type of project, it's because it's compatible with the commission-approved comp plan?
Um, Vice Mayor, I need to separate that question. Um, the per, the purchase and sale agreement is one action. The comp plan, the, the elements within that purchase and sale agreement in terms of the developer obtaining entitlement in order to facilitate the transaction and the real estate transaction, those levels of entitlement have to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. Um, there's policies in the comprehensive plan about where we place density or, or, or units, how we deal with mass, um, how we deal with separation of uses, how we deal with mixed uses. When we review those particular applications to give, to grant the entitlement, which was outlined in the contract, we would review that against the comprehensive plan, our green plan, um, our zoning code, et cetera.
So, Mr. Stam, and I, I had, I'm unable to share my screen, so through the manager, if, um, I copied you, Mr. Dodge, uh, on a timeline of events that I'd like to share with the public. If, uh, we can have Mr. Stam share that, um, and, Mr. Stam, it's the dozen to 15 voting actions that were taken to get us to this point tonight? If you could share that document, please?
One second, sir.
That's it, and, um, it's a little bit difficult to see on my screen. I don't know if there's the ability to, to enhance it, but, Mr. Stam, since it's in front of you, if you could go in, uh, order, uh, what happened? Uh, who was the voting body? Line by line, please?
Um, uh, Vice Mayor, I'll, I'll do my best. The, there is, the, the items on this sheet are organized by either contract, contractual items or entitlement items. The first, the first five lines are contractual, starting with the purchase and sale agreement, which occurred back in January of 2016, uh, that, that was implemented with an ordinance, um. Then there was a contractual change, uh, the first amendment to the contract, um, on three, in March of 2016. And then there was another, um, amendment to the contract, um, in June of 2017, another amendment to the contract in September of 2017, and then the fourth amendment to the contract in June of 2019.
And, Mr., and, Mr. Stam, who was the voting body for those five items?
Uh, sir, I, I apologize, I, I don't know when that, when, I, I know Commissioner Good was the last, well, besides for the special election, um, I know Commissioner Good joined the board. I don't recall what year that was, um, I don't know who the, whoever was the first, the board in 2016, um, more than likely voted all the way through 2017, if I remember correctly.
Uh, you would be correct, uh, Commissioner Good was seated in April of 2018.
So, I was, if that's, if that's the case, then, um, either Commissioner Schechter, Commissioner Schwartz, Commissioner Siple, Commissioner Castillo, and again, I don't know who was Vice Mayor at those times, and I apologize for, uh, not naming it appropriately, as well as Mayor Ordus, would have voted on the items through 2017. The item in 2019, uh, would have included Commissioner, uh, Good instead of Commissioner Schechter and/or Commissioner Monroy. I don't know if Commissioner Monroy voted on any of these, uh, his term was short.
Okay, so, so for the first five times, it was unanimous vote, correct?
According, yeah, according to the, the record.
All right, and this is not reflected in the chart. It's a question for the city attorney. How many readings for these, uh, contracts and amendments would have been required, city attorney?
Mayor, respond, Mr. Mayor?
Please, city attorney?
Thank you, uh, under state law, ordinances are required to be read on two public, uh, meetings. Uh, one, uh, one first reading, which is not necessarily a public hearing, uh, the second of which, uh, must be a public hearing where the public has a right of access. Um, so two public hearings required for any ordinance adopted under chapter 166 and the city charter.
And in this case, city attorney, how many times were these unanimous votes? Did they occur just once? Did they occur twice for each item?
Uh, city attorney, if I could interject here, when we do an amendment to the contract, those typically go on the consent agenda unless it's pulled by a commissioner. So the first amendment, the second amendment, the third and the fourth amendment were initially placed on the consent agenda, um, and voted on only one time, whereas the ordinance for the purchase and sale agreement was done by ordinance. I hope that provides some clarification.
It, it does.
Vice Mayor, just, just for clarification, the reason that there's an ordinance as a base document, a base legal document, section 8.03 of our city charter requires that for the purchase and sale of property, et cetera, there's a required ordinance in connection with the sale of land, and that's essentially what, uh, we're dealing with there.
All right, so city attorney, uh, were all of these items, uh, Mr. Stam mentioned it was on consent, but this was at a public meeting, correct?
Absolutely unquestionably, required by state law and required by the city charter and code.
And any member of the public could have pulled the item? Uh, any elected official could advise their community about the item coming forward before them? Is that correct?
Generally, yes.
All right, uh, Mr. Stam, um, thank you for that. Uh, I have a, I have an email from Mr. Kennedy. Uh, I don't know if I had sent that to you or not with respect to, uh, the request for a traffic study and light installation along Dykes. Do you have that? And if not, I can, if not, I can read it into the record.
Vice Mayor, were you asking for me or Mr. Kennedy? I'm sorry.
Uh, if, uh, Mr. Stam, if, if you could share that on your screen, if you have it.
Give me one moment, sir.
Thank you. While Mr. Stam is, uh, pulling that information up, I received, um, a few emails from the, um, Towngate community over the last several days about concerns of being able to get in and out of the community and traffic backups. So I have a, um, self-imposed, um, rule that I don't, um, I don't mess with another commission district. But I found the information intriguing because I couldn't imagine with the amount of traffic that the community was, um, uh, was emailing me that there hasn't been a traffic study requested by an elected official. So, Mr. Stam, um, it says, uh, from Mr. Kennedy, uh, sent to me this morning at 10:30. Vice Mayor, I researched our records and have the following information. Signal warrant study was performed by Broward County, and we received notice on February of 2018 that the signal was not warranted at Northwest Vethan Dykes. Also, on July 2018, we received results of a warrant study performed by Broward County for protected left turn hours on Northwest 12, and that these left hours were not warranted. Thank you, Mr. Stam, you can take that down. I found it, I found it, um, I found it concerning that we have residents who are emailing, um, a commissioner that doesn't live in there, that, 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 that I don't represent, it's, it's represented by, by our western commissioners. And yet, we've heard at this dais, time and time again, about traffic. Yet, there's, the only thing that the city has on record is more than two and a half years ago about doing anything about it. So I found it, I found it quite concerning to me, enough so that I had to ask the city engineer who provided me this information. I also took one step further, and I spoke with our police chief to inquire with our traffic unit about what's going on over there. Um, the engineer had no information from PD indicating that there was, uh, anything than what, what was expected of, of traffic when you have I-75 and Pines Boulevard under construction and Sheridan Street under construction, and the, uh, issues once the, uh, Pembroke Road overpass opened up. There's no, there's no, there's nothing on record with the city to this point.
All right, Vice Mayor?
Finally, 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 Mayor, and, and I'm, I'm getting close to wrapping up here. At the last meeting, I spoke about what this city had done in the direction it had given the manager uh, to ensure that we did not have a bus depot. We now have a project under contract now for 182 that's been reduced by 10%. And the reason, um, and, Mr. Mealy, you could weigh in on this to confirm my, my statement is true and accurate, is the 125 single-family homes came off the table as a result of the requirement of this culvert. Is that correct?
With the, after the one and a half year delay of getting this easement from the golf course owner to being able to put in the culvert, that was a result, or that resulted in us coming back to the city asking for more time and also asking for the amendment to the contract that was approved last year.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. So in June of 2019, every elected official in Pembroke Pines had this information and supported the fourth amendment for 182. And recently, I've learned that there's been a push for, let's go back to 125. But the facts aren't matching the fiction because 125 came off the board a year and a half ago, one, contractually, two, because the project would have been in jeopardy had it not moved from single-family to townhome. Finally, Mayor, there's an email that went out to the community um, that I'm very concerned about. Coming from an elected who is claiming that there is no plan and there's no money for traffic mitigation. Now, we've heard testimony from the city. Um, we all sat there seeing the same information, so that's just blatantly not true. There, there has been, from the county, from FDOT, we've had how many meetings that we've all participated in? And I'm just disappointed to see that kind of thing going out to the community. It's uncalled for. If you don't like, if you, I'm, I'm wrapping up, Mayor. If you don't like a project, just say, "I don't like the project." But please don't provide information that the public is supposed to be relying on. It just doesn't match what's actually been happening since this comp plan has been in place from 2004 up until now. Mayor, that's all I have for the moment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Further discussion?
Siple?
Commissioner Siple, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, wow, I think I just got through an inquisition somewhere along the line there. I, I, I'm, I'm really, I'm really very disturbed with some information that was, uh, that was put out in the style in which, um, some questions were asked. I do have something that I sort of put a few notes together that I wanted to, um, share with everybody, and I am still gonna, I'm still gonna do that because I think it's important that we don't lose sight of what actually has happened here. All of this business about, you know, comp plans and all of that, that's, that's fine in this stand, and we do that, and we plan, but you know what? Plans, pencils have erasers, plans get changed based upon desires and needs. Sometimes it's financing, sometimes there's a lot of other reasons that happen that plans get changed. This item, this, this started, as you all know, briefly, Mayor, I'm gonna do this briefly. As you all know, this started a number of years ago when there was all this talk about a bus depot, a maintenance depot coming in there, and, um, I know that my residents and were up in arms about having something like that that truly did not fit in the community, was not anything that would be, um, uh, you know, appearance-wise or anything else. It just didn't fit, it was not the proper location for it. So we, as a commission, said, you know what, we don't like that, we're not gonna do that. We, we went out to bid, we were successful bidders, we purchased the property. And we purchased that property for $19 million. And we always planned that we were going to sell that to some development, something was gonna happen there. We knew it was much too valuable of a location, you're fronting on Pines Boulevard and you're fronting on Dykes, that it would just sit there and be undeveloped. But as owners, we were gonna be able to have some control over what was being placed in there that would fit within that community. We sold, we purchased it for $19 million. We then sold it to the Terra Group for $23.5 million. The Terra Group was one of 11 developers who bid on the land, and I remember those meetings upstairs in Mr. Dodge's office as, as well as if they were happening yesterday. And we chose Terra Group not just because of the price that they offered, but because of the plan, low density. That was a huge selling point for all of us. 125 single-family upscale homes were to be built there. The other bidders were much higher in density, some were as high as 298 units. Now, not only has the number of units changed, but the style of construction. I have no preference for either a single-family or a townhome, either one would be fine by me. But my concern and my resident concern is the density and that impact on surrounding communities. Traffic, well, it has been said that this will be, that there will be less traffic now than when it was the old post office. now than when it was the old post office. Well, that's the wrong concept if you've ever actually gone there and been there, as I have, for twenty-four years. The post office, traffic on the, on the post office was spread out all through the day and into the night. People weren't always just there first thing in the morning, as would be with a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and sixty-five units. Everybody in the morning, traffic, going to work, going to school, coming home mid-afternoon with school kids, and then obviously, coming home from, from work in the evening hours. You're going to have traffic jams and more than what we currently have. And it, it's different than when the post office was there. You can talk how many visits were there, but when those visits are spread out over twenty-four hours because people were at that post office at twenty-four hours getting into their mailboxes or what have you, it's not the same thing as a more regulated coming in and going. Central Falls is a prime example of how electeds should listen to their residents. If you recall, it started out as a single property with two hundred and ninety-eight units to be built. Central Falls is right over there, just, just west of Flamengo, uh, uh, close to, close to Pembroke, Pembroke Falls. Both Pembroke Falls and Pembroke Lakes residents were not happy with that density. And we worked with the developers and built, ended up building only about a hundred and fifty units. It is a beautiful area, and residents are happy with having some breathing room, as they call it. And the surrounding communities are happy as well. They fit in. It was the right project and the right location with the right, uh, design to it. I know there have been a lot of social media rumors out there saying that if this project doesn't go forward, um, our taxes will go up, our water rates are gonna go up, and our bank rating, our bond rating, I'm sorry, our bond rating will go down. So, Mayor, I have a question to the city manager. Mr. Dodge?
Mr. Dodge?
Yes, Mayor. Yes.
My first question to you is if this project doesn't go forward, uh, is that going to, uh, cause our taxes to go up?
Uh, in and of itself, no.
Okay. If this project doesn't go forward, does this mean that our water rates will go up?
Uh, no, it does not mean that.
Okay. If this project does not go forward, is that an indication that our bond rating is gonna go down?
Bond ratings aren't really tied to development. Uh, bond ratings are determined by other factors of the budget.
Okay, so those three items that were sent out by an elected official of the city to residents are incorrect facts, correct?
The, the questions you asked me, uh, and my responses do stand.
Okay, those three questions that I asked you, that's what I'm referring to in the, in the email. So, we all need to probably be really careful about what we say, um, if we're not putting out correct and true information. Um, yes, the city did put up nineteen million dollars from our utility fund reserve to purchase the property. But as we have already recouped eleven and a half million for the commercial portion of this site, our utility fund reserve is in good shape, and we currently have a reserve amount of about fifty-seven million dollars. Our financial advisor recommends that we maintain approximately nine months of operating expenses as a reserve, and that would be forty-three million dollars. So, you can see, we are in good shape, and the rates are not being increased because of that. I truly hope that this elected body will act as it has in the past and support a district commissioner's request for support on a district issue. Only, this is very different, as you have now two district commissioners and their residents, thousands of residents that are asking for support and relief. No one is asking to completely shut down the project, but they are asking to return and remain at the original one hundred and twenty-five units. We must work together as a collegial body, and please consider the residents' request. Again, I want to make it very clear that we are not looking to support shutting this project completely down. But I remember sitting in that room, and I remember again, colleagues, the selling point on choosing Terra Group was absolutely the one hundred and twenty-five units and the density that they were promising to us for us to sell to our residents that the project was going to be, um, uh, would be fit into the community and would be an asset to the surrounding communities because it would be like the surrounding communities. Um, I do have a couple of questions, um, uh, and, and if I, I would like some clarity on. Um, I know it was brought up about traffic and how we haven't really actually done anything about traffic and, and what have you. If I recall, um, correctly, um, we have fought, and, and I know that this commissioner, I will speak for myself, but I did say "we," um, have fought very hard to make sure that we got, uh, the Dykes and Sheridan Street intersection corrected where it was such a dangerous intersection. I can't tell you how many times residents have, that I've seen on the street have thanked and said, what a great, uh, what a great addition those turning lanes are and how much safer it is out there. We have asked, this commissioner has requested several times based upon residents' requests to me as their elected representative to look at having a, an additional traffic light on Dykes Road at Fifteenth Street. And as you all know, I hope that you all know, there are actually two Fifteenth Streets on Dykes Road. One is on the east side, one is on the west, and they don't line up. They're blocks apart from each other. So, while we have asked and have had many conversations with our city engineer, who in turn, doing his job, goes to the county and wherever he needs to go to see about adding a stoplight there because of that request, it has not happened. And I don't want it to be out there that it hasn't happened because there hasn't been lack, there has been lack of trying. There clearly through the years has been requests. We've had several, uh, requests out there and several warrants, uh, processed that were put out there. One, the Northern Fifteenth Street, they deemed is just too close to, to, uh, Sheridan Street to have a separate light there, and that's the reason that couldn't happen. The other is, um, uh, they are still, they said, come back to us. We think numbers are going up. They've increased every year. So, we're hoping at some point we will be able to request, um, and get an actual light there. Um... One other question that I had was, um, a statement that was made or a question that was asked was, um, was it a direct result, uh, the one hundred and twenty-five homes coming off of the plan was a direct result because of the culvert happening? And so, um, I, I'm not sure that I, I'm not sure that I understood that, um, completely. Um, how, how that culvert, unless it was just that it was because there was cost involved and therefore that was the factor of making the one hundred and twenty-five homes come off. I'm not, I'm not quite sure how, how that would have played in there. So, if someone could explain that to me, I would appreciate it. The other portion that I wanted to state, Mayor, before, before I, before I stop is, um, um, you know, we recently all went through a very heavy rain and, and severe flooding, uh, area. Roads were, were, many roads were, uh, unpassable and impassable, and residents, a lot of residents couldn't flush their, their toilets, or they had toilets that were backing up into their house. We need to fix our water infrastructure before we add more load to it. We must work with South Broward Drainage District. We must work with South Water Water Management District in order to, the three of us together, to find a solution to this before we add anything more. We can't take care of what we have, so why at this point would we add more to that load? It does not make sense to me. As you all know, I had a virtual District Three meeting, which, um, which was well-attended, um, and a lot of really good information went out to residents, but it did, it also caused residents to ask further questions. And they are saying, don't do anything else until you can fix this. It was not nice in my house for five or six or seven days with my family of five that, with small children, and we couldn't flush our toilets. We couldn't, they couldn't brush their teeth. They couldn't get bathed. They couldn't do anything. So, we need to, we need to look at things as an entire city, and this is not the way to go at, at this particular point. Um, and I guess, City Attorney, I would have a question for you if I could. There's been, Mayor, if I could, there's been, um, a couple, couple of references made to being under contract, uh, at a hundred and eighty-two units. I'm not, I'm not quite sure that I, that, that I'm clear on that, and I would like for you to, I'm gonna ask you a little bit more, and then if you would clarify. I understand that, that we had a, we had a proposed contract from the beginning to move forward with this selling, the price, the one hundred and twenty-five homes, all that. There were some, um, uh, some, now it looks like there are some changes that are coming through. Um, and this reference to a hundred and eighty-two units, that is not, is that, are we under, are we under contract or are we under negotiations still to seek a contract to move forward on, um, the residential portion? Because my understanding is the commercial, we're pretty well set on that. Money's exchanged hands, construction's going on. But specifically to the residential portion, the, the, the language, um, City Attorney, if you could clarify that a little bit more, are we actually, because the language that I read said "up to a maximum of", so to me, that doesn't, that's not really a contract. So, could you explain that a little bit more, please?
I will try. Mr. Mayor, if I can respond to, to the Commissioner. I, I pulled the original agreement and the four, four different amendments that relate to it. And I'll make quick reference, if I can, to what I believe is the focus of your question. And that occurs in the Fourth Amendment to the Agreement for Sale and Purchase. The Sale and Purchase Agreement was the seminal document. That's the base document that was executed, uh, originally, um, which related to both Phase One and Phase Two for the sale price as described in the contract. And that price was, again, the twenty-three point five million, which you described earlier. Uh, through the various amendments, Amendment Four, which I did review, is the last amendment of record between the parties, which is the city of Pembroke Pines and the, the buyer. Uh, six, one, six, zero, 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 Pines and SF Investments LLC. It's the Fourth Amendment to the Agreement for Purchase and, for Sale and Purchase. It was dated, uh, as of, uh, by the city in July of two thousand nineteen. And the paragraph to which I believe you refer indicates the following. Uh, "Any and all references in the agreement", which would be the purchase and sale agreement, to which this is an amendment, "to contemplated, to contemplated improvements with respect to Phase, the Phase Two of the property", which is a defined term, "shall hereafter be deemed to refer to approximately one eighty-two, one eighty-two townhouse units to be constructed on Phase Two of the property", per ends, fifty-seven of these one eighty-two units are reserve units as described in the Broward County and City of Pembroke Pines land use plans closed per ends. So, the contract amendment, which amends the base agreement, the purchase and sale agreement, uh, which was signed back in, um, the date, the original agreement date, back in two thousand fifteen, signed by the manager in twenty, early, early two thousand sixteen, one eleven, two thousand sixteen. Essentially calls for the one hundred and eighty-two townhome units as described in the Fourth Amendment. There is record evidence of that, 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 that language in the actual amendment itself.
And, and City, um, City Attorney, does the language, um, where is the language then that says that it was up to one hundred and eighty, or a hundred and eighty-two units? That's, that's what that language was, correct?
Actually, I'm, I'm, I'm reading right from the contract, and that's the language that's in the actual Fourth Amendment, which, which I pulled. And it, again, it, I don't see the language of "up to", but I said, I do see, uh, "completed, contemplated improvements with respect to the Phase Two", which would be the second phase of acquisition of the property as a defined term, "shall hereafter be deemed to refer to approximately one eighty-two townhouse units to be constructed on Phase Two of the property, et cetera." So...
All right. Well, so, City Attorney, then, so the lang, you, the words that you just used that said approximately, oh, is that, does that, is approximately mean that that's a guaranteed amount? Or does approximately mean that it's somewhere in that range?
The answer is that one eighty-two townhomes is, is a, is a target, uh, I believe, arguably, in the agreement. Um, different lawyers may have a different view of the subject of what the word "approximately" means, and that's kind of why there are people that wear black robes in the courthouse. But I believe that the contemplated discussion between the seller and the buyer, the city is the seller and the buyer of the property, had an expectation of the target of one eighty-two. I, I will, will grant you that the, the language of "approximately" is in the document. Whether or not, um, a, a, a material change of one eighty-two to a lesser sum or even an increase of beyond one eighty-two, which, which would not be permitted under the contract, um, could be the subject matter of legal conversation if there were to be any. But the language in the document doesn't say "up to". It says "approximately". But the target of one eighty-two is a, is a solid target that's, that's defined in the document as a defined term and, and target number.
Uh, thank you. Um, I have one last question for you.
Commissioner, if I could interrupt, Mr. Mayor.
One last question for, I just have one last question for the City Attorney.
I just want to interrupt, I just want to interrupt one moment. The, uh, the, the question you asked about the culvert on Grand Palm's property, I got involved with that personally. Because Mr. Siegel wanted one hundred percent protection if anything happened to that culvert. And Terra Group could not do that. So, we continued to try to negotiate with Mr. Siegel. That's what took most of the time, and that's what the, uh, timeframe ended up as because of that culvert. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I, I think that, you know, I thank you for sharing that. But I think, you know, that we, we knew that because we knew that it was, um, you know, there was that much of time. No, what I asked was, why did it, why did the one hundred and twenty-five homes come off of the, uh, because of the culvert is what was stated, and I wanted that clarified. So, so, um, City Attorney, if in fact, um, if in fact, this developer has all the rights and everything to go forward with their project, what they want to, why, why are they coming before us again for some approvals? What, what approvals are they asking for? What, what more are they asking for? If they, if they already have the right to do, to do what they want to do, why are they coming, coming before us again?
I can respond.
Attorney?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner, very good question. Yeah, I would divide the question, part of which is a planning professional discussion and decision, which I'd have Mr. Stam, uh, take a look at with you and try to respond appropriately. But what is before the commission this evening, uh, and you aptly placed the, the, the mix of the discussion, is essentially a, a modification of the Pines Village Market Mixed Use Development District Design Guidelines for the twenty-seven acre parcel. It is an amendment to the actual guidelines, which are controlled by the city commission. The Planning and Zoning Board, I believe, and Mr. Stam can, can support this discussion, I suspect, given his presence at the meeting, um, specifically to support the, the guideline modifications, but also to include within the context of that request, a specific number. That number, which is the, which is described in the ordinance itself for second reading, is not up to and not, not over and above. It is a specific up to a hundred and sixty-five units, which is, which is to some degree less than the number set forth in the actual contract amendment. So, the "for you" is not specifically a rezoning of that land. It's simply a, the, the allocation of flexibility units, um, consistent with the contract itself, and a, a change to the master design guideline program and plan, which is solely controlled by the city commission. And, and, and I think Mr. Stam might have mentioned this, but the Planning and Zoning Board is the, is deemed to be the local planning agency under the state statute, Chapter one sixty-three, which essentially is a required stopping place along the, the, the tracks that gets at the station. The last station, which is, is you all as the final deciders. But it may be useful to have Mr. Stam just to clarify, I think, your other part of the question, which is the, the premise of this ordinance, um, before the commission, aside from the number of units per se.
That'll be, that'll be fine. That'll be fine. That's fine. No, I'm good, Mayor. Good. I, I do want to, I do want, since it was brought up, um, that, that this did go before P and Z. And P and Z's recommendation, if you all recall, that they sent to us, they are an advisory board to us, was that it was a hundred and twenty-five units with fifteen collection units. Um, I'm not, I, I guess... Um, I'm not, I, I guess I'm a little unclear as to why, um, you know, why we are not, um, observing what, uh, what our board has sent to us as a recommendation. We, we do certainly, you know, hand, make sure that we, we have people on those boards that, that are knowledgeable and understand and can make good decisions. And I listened to that meeting, it was a virtual meeting, I listened to that meeting and they asked for a hundred and twenty-five, they wanted a hundred and twenty-five and they gave a fifteen flex unit. So that's not ever really been brought up too much, uh, too much in this discussion. But mayor, I have one last statement and then I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close on this. Um, I, I'm gonna say, I, I hope that this elected body will act as it has in the past and support a district commissioners, commissioners' request for support on a district issue. Only this is a very different one than we've had before. You actually now have two district commissioners and, and hundreds if not thousands of residents that are asking, as you all have gotten emails, phone calls, texts over the last few days, asking for support and relief. No one is asking to completely shut down the project, but asking to remain at the original one hundred and twenty-five units. We must work together as a collegial body. We have done that in the past, folks, my colleagues, we have done that. And we have given and shown respect to district commissioners that have come forward with something that their residents are begging for and asking for. So I am asking you now, my colleagues, to do the same and show that same collegial effort and listen to what our residents are asking for as their representatives and their voice at city halls to make their life and their community as pleasant as it can be. So I'm hoping that at some point we can roll this in and we can act as that collegial body respectful and move forward with what should have happened originally, the hundred and twenty-five units and whether it's townhome or single family home, that's what the residents are asking for, they're asking us to be their voice and that's what we need to do. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor?
Further, further.
Castillo, yes, Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Thank you very much, I'll be as brief as, as I can. I didn't bring any charts with me or, uh, and I don't plan to, uh, ask very many questions. A couple of points of information. Uh, I was there during the, uh, the storm at Grand Palms and there was significant flooding there. The entire golf course was underwater, uh, and there were some scattered, uh, difficulties flushing there. I, I, I bring that up because it was brought up by others. However, I don't know whether the culvert helped or, or didn't help, but I do know that they drained faster than other areas, uh, in, uh, in West, uh, Pines, like Silver Lakes or like Chapel Trail. So maybe it helped and if it did, that's great. That culvert had been discussed in two, since two thousand and four, when the discussion about the back entrance first arose. So the fact that there's a culvert there isn't some new idea, it's been discussed forever, for as long as I've been on the commission and as long as that project has been going on. And I'm glad, uh, that it's, uh, being arranged for. Uh, in every one of the votes that I participated in, which were listed in a chart before, there was an assumption inherent, an important one inherent to my vote, and that was the traffic relief projects were coming. Let's go back to the videotape as, as, as it were, of just some years ago, where, for example, the Pembroke Road completion to US twenty-seven, where we were going to build just the two lanes for something in the area of about four million dollars, was part of our budget. And then came an opportunity to submit it to the state and we said, well, if the state will fund it, uh, how, how could you not submit it? And indeed, the legislature, legislature recommended it, but the governor vetoed it. So we were back to square one. And then there was some other federal grant, maybe the mayor can remember, I don't know if it was a tiger grant or some other grant, I, I forget what it was, but there was some other grant and that didn't happen. And then there was some other issue and then there was some other issue and then the, the first penny, half penny didn't pass and then we worked hard and we got the second half penny to pass and on and on and on. This commissioner still suffers from the scars of having to wait thirteen years to get the overpass done in district four, where this project is currently located, district four. Uh, and, and to make sure that, that everything that I could do, together with others, uh, was to push and to push and to never give up and to challenge people and to, and, and to bring them flowers if I had to and kick them in the rear end if that was necessary. What, what, we did what we had to do in order to make that project come home and it finally did, but many, many years later. I remember we, uh, we had a poster board in the old city hall that I asked for, that Charlie put up with, with the, with the, uh, schedule for the Pembroke Road overpass, which never happened. First it was to be completed in two thousand and six, then two thousand and seven, then two thousand and eight, then two thousand and twelve, then two thousand and fourteen, on and on and on. Then it had to be redesigned because it was off by two or, or two inches or four inches or a foot or whatever the heck it was. It was, it was a disaster and we had to wait and wait and choke in traffic and choke in traffic while more and more and more excuses were put forward. Never-ending, literally a parade of excuses coming forward. Tonight we hear that these projects are scheduled, but they're not. There isn't a set schedule, there isn't a contractor, there isn't a contract, there isn't a notice to proceed and I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be fooled by it anymore. I want to see concrete evidence that these projects in Pembroke Pines are going to be taken care of. We are sick and tired of the traffic, sick and tired of it. We want a solution and the solution is at city hall. We are the second largest, maybe even the largest city in Broward County. These are nickel dime projects compared to what other things are on that, are on that agenda and we can't get them done. People out here are sick and tired of it. Today there was a, a vaccine announced in, uh, approval in, in England. Next week, the FDA is supposed to, uh, uh, announce one here. We are now, pretty much next week, gonna be at the end of the beginning of the COVID epidemic. And once the COVID epidemic is, is done, let's hope, people are in their cars and going back to work again. And then it's, and then it's gridlock as usual, gridlock in the morning, gridlock at night, gridlock all the time. We're sick of it and we want a solution. And so until we see that solution, I'm voting no. It's just that simple. And I'm doing it in order to represent the people of this area who have had enough. They don't want any more excuses, they don't want any more stories, they want us to deliver. And if we can't deliver, I'm voting no. So whatever the votes were before, the circumstance now is different, very different. And I want concrete proof, not some comment on a, on a, on a spreadsheet that came out of a planning meeting. I want concrete proof as to when things are gonna get done. Until I see that, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, let me clarify a couple of things that you said. I'm not even sure why you brought up the overpass. But as you know, in two thousand and four, I got directly involved with that overpass. It was supposed to be done by the state, the MPO was involved. And then the state said they couldn't fund it and it went to the county. And then the county said they couldn't fund it and then it went to a partnership. And it was supposed to be a different type of overpass, as you well know. It was supposed to be an overpass that allowed anyone to drive underneath it and go linearly to connect with I seventy-five, both on the south side, on the west side and on the east side. However, Miramar did not want that connection to take place. So what happened was, we simply had an overpass, but that overpass did help. So that was a long time in coming and that's just what happens with these projects. The lap agreement with Pines Boulevard, uh, because it was a lap agreement, we were able to do it ourselves, then get reimbursed from the state for it. That's not happening anymore. Now there are different agreements. So, uh, I also, I'm saying that I want the facts and I think I have the facts and I'm gonna vote my, uh, vote on the facts. Okay, any further discussion? All right, Mr. Benio, we have some people who wanna speak, can you take over, please?
Good evening, thank you so much. Um, we have a couple of members from the public that would like to speak. Uh, we'll first go with the people who have, uh, raised their hand and have put instructions to the chat mechanism, uh, for the WebEx platform to, uh, know us, to how to raise their hand. Uh, for speakers that have called in, uh, through their phone, uh, please press phone three to raise your hand so you can then be, um, uh, given opportunity to speak. So I will speak, I will go with a caller, I will unmute you, please state your first and last name, address and your three minutes to speak.
Are you there?
Hello, can you, can anybody hear me? Hello?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, go ahead, you have three minutes. Name, name and address, please.
Hi, um, yes, uh, my name is, um, my name is Akla Akala and my home is one five six four zero southwest sixteenth court in Pembroke Pines. Um, I had to come back and state my opinion again because at the last meeting, it almost seemed that it was not gonna pass and I, I, I hope it goes smoother this time. So, um, I have been so, I, I, you know, I have very selfish reasons for wanting this approved, but my son and his wife and beautiful baby boy are being transferred here next year and they've started looking but, uh, to afford something new. They haven't, uh, they've had to move, uh, like farther away from me. So these townhomes should fit them perfectly for their first homes. So their, uh, the interest rates are low and this could give me, uh, give them, uh, the opportunity to purchase instead of renting and, uh, probably close to their camp, grandparents, which I would love very much. So I, I know everyone is worried about more people and traffic, but I still think this is a good idea. So I, I hope you do take it into account and I hope, uh, this, this passes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Benio.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, we will go with Paul Jakif, I will unmute you, please state your name and your address, you have three minutes to speak, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, uh, rest of the commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Paul Jakif. I live at twenty-one twenty-four northwest one fifty-ninth avenue in Pembroke Pines in a community known as Towngate. I have, I, I believe all of you have received emails from me, uh, that I am against this project, the way it's being proposed. I am not against, uh, expansion and building more homes. I am, I am definitely not in support of the number of, of, of residences we are, are talking about and what you are considering, aside from the traffic. And I will give you a free, no cost, traffic update. It's not a chart, I can tell you, pre-COVID, trying to get out of my area takes me oftentimes three and four light changes before I can even get onto seventy-five. And I literally live at the corner of Dykes and Sheridan and just getting out of that corner alone. I do have to commend you all though, for the improvement that you made to that intersection at Dykes and Sheridan, it is tremendous, it has made a tremendous impact. However, how long had that intersection stood as it was before it got changed? And I am concerned that once this developer leaves town, we will be left with the cost of dealing with all of the additional services, fire, police, sewer, you name it, all those costs will be added to the coffers. I'm quite concerned about this level. Again, I do not oppose housing, I'm not against that. I am also, just so you know, the new president of the Towngate Master Association and I represent close to twenty-one hundred homes and townhomes. I have heard from many, many residents, as I'm sure the rest of you have, that are against this to this size, not against the project. Don't, please don't misunderstand what I'm telling you, it is about the size of it. We cannot continue to keep to build and then wait to catch up to it at a higher and higher cost because as these projects go on and on, for example, that intersection at Sheridan and Dykes, it probably should have happened fifteen years ago, but I'm sure it took ten to twelve years to get approval and funding for it. So I am pleading with you, please reconsider the size of this, of this project. I appreciate what you all do, I appreciate Pembroke Pines, I love this city, I love living here and I appreciate the, the commission for all of your work. Thank you for listening.
Thank you and congratulations on your presidency.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, we will move with, uh, Guillermo Medina. I will unmute you, please state your name and address and you have three minutes to speak, thank you.
Hi, good evening, um, my name is Guillermo Medina, my address is three six zero northwest one fifty-third avenue, Pembroke Pines, Florida, three three zero two eight. Um, I had called in last time, uh, we had spoken, or you guys were speaking about this, um, and I was a little concerned with all the negative, um, negative comments I had seen about the project. Uh, I want to again, add a few of my own thoughts, uh, as to why I support this project. Um, I've lived in this neighborhood now for well over eight years and I do wanna stay here. Um, it's a nice area and me and my family, uh, prefer to be here as well. Um, as we've all known, COVID has hit the city and state really hard and, uh, to keep working, I think projects like this do a lot for the community, as I am an electrician myself. Um, and this is the type of thing that, that keeps me and my other, um, um, I'm sorry, my other, um, oh man, I can't think of the word now, my, my other, oh man, well, the other people that work in the same business as I do, I'm sorry, I forgot the word right now. Um, it keeps them working, it keeps paying their bills and I think it is a good economic boost, um, in this area that all of us could definitely benefit from. And I have done some work for Lennar in the past and, um, well, I don't know if I'll get the opportunity to actually work on this project, um, I do know that if it doesn't pass, uh, that option is nothing, so I, I have no option of working for it. So that's basically how I feel about it, I hope you guys approve it. Uh, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Benio.
All right, thank you, mayor. Uh, with the next person, we will go with Victoria Rodriguez. I will unmute you, please state your name, address and you have three minutes to speak, thank you.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Victoria Rodriguez and I've lived at seven ninety southwest one fifty-eighth way for the last eight years. First of all, not everyone is opposed to this project. Um, even increased request, I still think this is better than the original plan when it was sold to the developer. Um, I lived in a large home with, and it's a lot to take care of and maintain. Um, having options down the road might just be a benefit to me and my family. As for traffic, obviously no one likes traffic, no one wants more of it, but really, this isn't any worse and I believe, much better than the bus depot. And the difference from the original number and this one is minimal, yet they are offering road drainage and a traffic signal improvement that we as taxpayers are not going to have to pay for. I think it's common sense and hope you do too. Thank you very much for letting me speak, happy holidays to everyone and have a good night.
Thank you so much. Mr. Benio.
Thank you, mayor. For the next caller, we will go ahead and, uh, it's caller nine five four two and the last two digits is two three, I will go ahead and unmute you, please state your name, address and you have three minutes to speak, thank you.
Um, good evening.
Yeah, yes, thank you, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, um, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Ortensia Sasker, my address is one five six seven nine northwest twelve road, uh, my community is Towngate. Um, first and foremost, thank you for hearing me, I'm gonna try to be brief. Um, I'm a mother of three, I've been in the Pembroke Pines residence for the past fifteen years and my opinion about this project, I'm not against housing, um, I believe in the American dream, I'm an immigrant originally from Brazil, um, I love Pembroke Pines. My kids were born here, I am involved in the community, they all go to charter schools, uh, my husband is a coach at the YMCA, but I have to say, this is a travesty, not only about traffic, but about many other services that will be impacted, our schools, our safety, the value of our property, um, a hundred and twenty-five for me, being, I, I, I'm not in favor. A hundred and twenty-five for me, being, I, 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 I'm not in favor of a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty-two. This is a travesty for our community. That will, the density, the amount of other issues besides traffic. I, I'm a, a worker for waste management. I don't have to drive, I, I'm five minutes from my job. My husband takes a long time just to get from our property to I seventy-five. But this, what's happening here, I ask, and I plead to the Commissioners, to put yourselves in the residents' shoes, and you know deep in your heart that this will not impact our area in a positive way. And that's all I have to say. I am, I am absolutely appalled that from one twenty-five, you wanna go all the way to one seventy, one eighty-two. This will bring a very, very bad consequences to our beautiful Pembroke Pine City, which I love very much. I wish you all happy holidays. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Benio. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the next uh public, it's Ryan Greenberg. I will unmute you, please uh state your first and last name, address, and then you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Ryan Greenberg, one nine four eight five southwest sixty-seventh street in Pembroke Pines. Um, I too, like Commissioner Castillo and Vice Mayor Seiple, uh, do hope that this body can come together on a solution that's supportive of the community and residents of Pembroke Pines. That being said, um, since they only have a little bit of time, I look at these developments for usability, maneuverability, safety, ingress and egress. I did not see if there was a gate on these slides. Maybe I couldn't see it because of the small picture. I'm very concerned about the south exit uh between the property and the commercial, the residential property and the commercial. It reminds me of the current property at Flamingo and Pines Boulevard, uh, where Trader Joe's is, and you come south, you make a right turn to go out to Flamingo and make another right. So that doesn't, that's not a very safe exit. My other concern is, are there left and right turn lanes for backup on Dykes entering and exiting, uh, or entering from north and south on Dykes into this, the residential property if it is gated? I don't know if Mr. Mealy or Mr. Stam could answer those questions for me, but I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great holiday.
Thank you. Mr. Benio. Thank you, Mayor. Are we gonna let Dennis Mealy or Mike Stam respond to that question?
You could.
Mr. Stam or Mr. Mealy?
Um, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to respond now? Yeah. Okay. So, okay, yes, so uh the community is gated, uh, and there are turn lanes uh coming off of Dykes Road for the entrances, um, as, as we always do. Uh, and we've already looked at the stacking for the gate to make sure that the gate was recessed far enough off of Dykes Road, that there would be no impact on Dykes Road for the stacking at the gate. Uh, the cross-access between the uh commercial and the residential is interior to the property, not out on Dykes Road, so this is not the same. I'm familiar with the location where the Trader Joe's is. Um, I actually love their pretzels and their uh dried coconut, so I go there, uh, but it's not like that at all. Thank you.
Is there a stop sign or?
Yes, of course, there's a stop sign.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. All right, um, that concludes the people that have raised their hand or have uh wanted to speak to this WebEx platform. I'll, I'll say it again, just so uh we can see if there's anybody else. Uh, oh, Kim Tyler uh has raised their hand. Um, I will unmute you, please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, go, go ahead, Ms. Taylor, you have three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, hi, my name is Kim Tyler. Uh, my address is one five nine two one southwest fourteenth street, three three zero two seven. Uh, I am calling in again to show my support for this application. Uh, last month, I told you guys about me getting married soon. I'm one month closer, so I'm getting a little more nervous. Um, I just wanted to reme- Thank you. I just wanted to remind you that there is support and people who believe that this is the better alternative. Uh, I am one of them. I think they've come a long way to make this the best it can be, and I think you should vote yes. Uh, thank you for your time. Stay safe.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Benio. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have Laura Franzek. I will unmute you, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Laura Franzek. My address is one nine one five nine southwest eighth street in Pembroke Pines, three three zero two nine. I did wanna express thanks to the Commission for entertaining the comments um and the feedback from everybody this evening. I appreciate the residents who are stepping forward to say that they appreciate having the opportunity for new townhomes. I don't think that the comments that have been shared today are saying nobody wants the development, but to Vice Mayor Seiple's point, as well as Commissioner Castillo, the question is the density and the size. That is the question at hand. I appreciate everybody who is looking for housing. I have a question for Mr. Mealy as far as how we consider this quote-unquote affordable. I believe the housing units are starting at three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per unit, and while that's um understandable for folks that are just starting out, I'm not sure that that would really qualify as affordable housing. It's not like this is the only potential townhome development within the city of Pembroke Pines. What we are asking for as residents this evening is for the opportunity for our voices to continue to be heard, that the traffic, the pollution, the noise, and the impact that a development of this size has on this community is making it more and more untenable for the residents who live here. To have to spend forty-eight minutes to get from a hundred and eighty-fourth street to seventy-five on Pines Boulevard without rain, without any issues with traffic lights is ridiculous. To add this amount of density to an already very busy intersection and corner is not going to improve the life of the residents in that area, as well as within the surrounding committee, or commi- um, community, excuse me. That is the point that we are asking for. Again, I appreciate our Commissioners for stepping forward and bringing this point to bear. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Benio. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have a callers that have raised their hand. Uh, the, we'll start out with uh nine five four six and ending eight one. I will unmute you, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is David Khan. I live at twenty-three forty northwest one eighty-sixth avenue. My community is Keystone Lake. I am the Vice President on the Board of Directors for that community of five hundred and ten homes. So I've listened all the evening to uh the comments, and I agree with the Commissioner Seiple. Um, we're not against housing, we're not against improvement. We are concerned about the density. We are a community that's a little bit further out west, but we have to traverse Pines and Sheridan to get out to seventy-five. And with the apartment buildings, the school zones, and everything else, um, there's great concern about traffic. I'm also concerned about school, safety, um, just the quality of life, you know, why folks chose to come out to West Pembroke Pines. So I think as you guys consider this, um, think about what that has done for West Pembroke Pines in terms of tax base and everything else. You don't wanna be the Commission that sort of kills the goose that lays the golden egg, right? Because we don't wanna be in a place where folks don't wanna be here anymore, because of all of those things that are being impacted. So um, I do appreciate everyone's time and effort on this, but I would say that's something that um, at least the residents in my community are very concerned about, and I'm just sharing that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Benio. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we will have, we have one more uh caller, three zero five seven, ending in nine five. I will unmute you, please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Oh, man, I guess elected. To talk. To talk here.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead. Mr. Benio. Okay. All right, uh, Patricia Mozales, you will be unmuted. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patricia Mozales. I live at one six one three southwest one fifty-eighth terrace in Pembroke Pines, three three zero two seven. Um, I was able to join. I wrote a letter because I wasn't sure I'd be able to hop on, but um, I spoke last time, and I'm gonna tell you that, you know, I get that people don't want this in their backyard, and, you know, quite honestly, a lot of these people would not be living where they do if everyone had voted against their communities as well. Um, it is a need. I mean, I'm looking for a townhome in the next couple of years when I retire. I live in a big home now. I'd like to downsize. You know, I'll ha- I'll be on retirement income. It'll be perfect. And, you know, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, if that's what they're going for, that is lower income compared to these houses out there, which I really can't afford once I'm on more of a limited income. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity, you know, like I said, down the road, probably about two or three years, I'm hoping to retire, and um, it would be perfect for me. My family, my friends all live in this area. You know, I do all my shopping in this area. Everything I do is right there, and it, there are people who need this, and it is a good project, and I do hope that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Benio. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, num- uh, telephone number seven eight six two with last two digits zero zero. I will be, I will be unmuting you. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a Chris Patrick, fifteen seven seven nine northwest fourth court here in Towngate. And uh, I don't know how you all uh seen the impact after we got Costco's over here with the amount of traffic and uh going through that and several, several uh changes in, in design to entrance and exits. But uh, I think the, the area over there with additional homes, you know, one twenty-five's plus the commercial, there's a lot of traffic. I don't know how we got this far in the city commission voting all these changes. Me not being aware of all the public comments, I hadn't, I mean, I just got involved in, in the situation, but I think that uh, we, we need to take a look at how many houses will be built. We need to look at the, the drainage. You know, we had, Towngate got flooded in several areas. Border Patrol was flooded. So uh, I think you guys need to take a look at that. I'm, I'm not really uh, a for additional housing. Now, we got plenty of housing here in Pembroke Pines, and uh, that's, that's my opinion right there. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Benio. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, right now, we don't have any more members from the public that have raised their hand, but I do, but I do believe the city clerk may have some that have- Can you read the people that wanted their comments, uh, public?
I have some comments, Mayor, that were emailed to us, and I believe Mike Stam wanted to speak on some of these, too.
Okay.
Mr. Stam?
Mr. Stam?
Yes, Mayor.
Did you wanna speak?
Well, it, um, I have the comments that were submitted via public comments that I need to put into the record. We have a series of comments. Um, some of the people that have already spoken have also supplied comments. I will not read them into the record. They will be part of the written record, but not part of the, the verbal record as I move through. I have an email from B.A. Seebach, Bethany and Susan Seebach. I really do not see how roads and the systems, sewers, schools and such, can support a hundred and seventy new townhomes on Dykes and Pines. It seems like poor planning and greed to continue overdevelopment. I have an email from Ms. Susan Snyder, seven three zero southwest hundred ninety-first avenue. Dear Mayor, Orders and Commissioners, as you make decisions about approving building proposal for Pines and Dykes, please consider the following. The last meeting resulted in a potential approval of a hundred and seventy units, when the original number was one twenty-five, and recommended by the P and Z at a hundred and forty. The intersection is already strained by existing traffic. The number of dwellings an obvious effect on the additional amount of traffic flowing in this tax traffic pattern. While a survey may have been done by the builder, you should not take his opinion as fact, and you should step back and take time for independent research that will surely indicate more vehicles and people than developers are suggesting. This is only one of many building plans for West Pines, which collectively could result in a concrete jungle replacing our few green spaces all the way to US twenty-seven. You are the community's elected voice to stand up to in, to indiscriminate and excessive building for financial benefit of builders and investors with the lack of concern for the quality of life and natural environment that wa- makes West Pine so special. Recent approvals of unsightly townhomes has already degraded in neighborhoods. I urge you to refuse this building plan for the intersection of Pines and Dykes. If that is not possible, please delay final approval of the plan to conduct independent research on traffic and other impacts, and then only approve recommendations from the P and Z board for a hundred and forty or less. I have an email from the Citron family. I have lived in Silver Lakes for the past twenty-six years. I am totally against the proposed townhouse development on the corner of Pines and Dykes. This area doesn't need a complex of a hundred and seventy units, or even a hundred cramped into a small area. We have, what we currently need is more open spaces such as trees filled with parks for children and pets to play, and areas that help conservation of our planet. No more crowded living spaces with additional traffic and pollution that accompany them. Please do everything possible during your meeting tomorrow, December second, to stop the development from moving forward. I will vote, an email from Ms. Pracano from Towngate, against the village. She just wants to have her voice heard. I have an email from Cecilia Fonseca. I moved to Pembroke Pines twenty-eight years ago. At the time, the only developments were Grand Palms, Chapel Trail, Silver Lakes. If I wanted to go to Publix, I had to go to Flamingo. When you got off I seventy-five at night, it felt like a werewolf movie, all in the mist. There were huge areas of undeveloped land, and I loved it. Now every single bit of green area has taken over by housing or storage units or strip malls. In the past five years, I've seen the area of the Southwest Regional Library turning into housing developments, as well as a strip mall. Uh, the area west of eight hundred and eighty-fourth used to have Malaluka trees, and now it's turned into a storage lot. Even though I live off of Pines, uh, and Silver Lakes face two, I avoid at all costs, either driving to Miramar or Sheridan. Property values are going down. Congestion is going to make it less enjoyable. Why do we want more people? I have an email from Ms. Linda Herveas. I am against housing at the intersection, Pines and Dykes, as well as other areas of Pembroke Pines west of I seventy-five. More housing brings traffic, more wear to all of our infrastructure services and higher populations in our schools. I moved the Chapel Trail thirty years ago when Pines was a two-lane road. The city has grown wisely, but putting housing on every plot of green land is not acceptable. The post office was a convenience, but more housing in that area will add to the nightmare of becoming another Kendall Drive. Douglas Phillips sent an email. There are many houses going up on Pines, just like the ones close to Okeechobee, and the ones on Pines Boulevard and a hundred and eighty-fifth. All new townhouses need to stop building. Too many people in Pines is overcrowded. I'm sorry. I've been here for twenty years, and it's being overcrowded. To whom it may concern, I'd like to send this email to voice my concern about the townhomes being built on Dykes and Pines. Please do not consider allowing any more residential to be built. We have too much overcrowding of our roadways and more in Pembroke Pines. Please stop the overbuilding, overconstruction, overcrowding. I have an email from Norman Galvin. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, what will it take to stop building large numbers of condos in Pines? As you've seen with the recent floods, building means more asphalt. More asphalt means nowhere for the water to go, except our streets and homes. Building here has to stop, or you'll see another flood catastrophe. It will be a stain on your record that you, allowing the building to continue, the quality of life of your citizens did not matter enough to stop it. That noise, congestion, pollution, and wear and tear on our roads is no concern to you. All you need to do is take a drive south to US one in Miami, and you will see our future. It's something you'd wanna live with every day in and day out. You'll see the results of your decisions when we next vote. Please be sure to read this message into your record. I, an email from Ms. Razielo Rubens. We moved to Pembroke Pines because it was not congested with good schools. Now with a hundred and forty to a hundred and seventy townhouses, traffic is going to be horrible. Miramar and I seventy-five is already a nightmare due to all the houses. This project needs to terminate. We need more shops and restaurants, not townhouses. We will vote you out. Thank you. Next message is from Mr. Larry Ramjanathan. Good morning. Let's read this in the open forum. You have to reconsider building more- "You have to reconsider building more townhomes or apartments in Pembroke Pines. Maybe just stop building in Pembroke Pines. You have taken a nice community and turned it into a busy city, one that no one cares to live in anymore. The people are no longer nice. Why? Because of the hustle to get through the traffic. It turns nice people into aggressive drivers. One mean act turns into another in return. There is no sense of ownership anymore. People who rent don't carry the same pride as people who own. That owner makes a commitment, making a large investment in their life. They are anchored in their community, and they make a decision for the quality of life, for good schools, and for a place to raise their family. You keep destroying for what I live. More taxes? I don't know. You don't have to build on every square inch of land that is available. We voted for you to represent us, the community that owns part of the community. Don't let us down." An email from El Diaz. "It's a shame how this game is played, not only on this occasion, also on Dykes and Pines Boulevard. More construction by rezoning. Please take residents into account, wetlands and ecosystem. I am one of the many residents who feel betrayed." Dear Mayor and Commissioners, this email is from Ms. Terry Ellison. "I am writing you to ask you to reconsider your vote for the townhouse project. Since first reading, we had what was called a 100-year rain event, and it affected all the West Pines residents with 12 to 18 inches of rain. It showed us how vulnerable our existing infrastructure, drainage, and water movement is. After that event, we heard from many West Pines residents about how their flooding situations have been happening for a long time and getting worse. Until our infrastructure and drainage problems are fixed, we should be rethinking our priorities. I, along with many other residents, experienced sewer backup, toilet problems, and not being able to use the shower for days. This is something I do not want to go through again. We also have serious traffic problems on our main roads that won't be fixed for years to come. The impact along Dykes and Pines will be unbearable, and no one has provided relief for adding more housing. The suggestion of adding one traffic light is not feasible and will not solve the problem. With this new development, you'll be adding over 600 additional vehicles to try to get in and out of the project using Pines or Dykes. We already have a wall-to-wall vehicles lined up on Pines and Dykes in the morning. Adding more vehicles before solving our traffic problems will not be the responsible thing to do. Please reconsider. I'm asking my record to be read into the record during the commission meeting." Mayor, I have a few more. I apologize. I'm going through. These need to be read into the record. An email from Jennifer Crandall. "I am concerned, resident of West Pembroke Pines, and I would like you to vote no on approving the proposed townhouse development on 172nd and Pines. This is a different project. I have been a resident of West Pembroke Pines for 19 years, and the traffic has gotten worse over the years. We do not need another housing development in West Pines. After Tropical Storm Ida, our area experienced severe and extreme flooding. We need more green areas for the water to go, not more homes. While I understand this may increase tax revenue for the city, it will ultimately hurt residents who live out here. If you are a member of next-door site, you will see the overwhelming opposition to this site. I have not seen one resident on the site to vote in favor of it. Please look this up for yourself." And the email from Jamie Valadiva. "Dear City of Pembroke Pines Mayor and Commissioners, I am Jamie Valadiva. I am a board member of Cedar Way on Dykes and Sheridan Street. I wanted to express my concern and my opposition to the proposed changes that will increase the previously approved density by over 40% from 120 luxury homes to 170 townhouses. The traffic as of now overloaded, and this proposed modification will impact negatively even more. It is my understanding that the original intent for the mixed-use designation was to create and promote a more pedestrian-friendly environment and reduce traffic generation as per Section 155.210A. Furthermore, it says that no single use shall dominate a mixed-use project, assuming 170 use townhomes with an area of 1200 to 1500 square feet will almost double the commercial maximum proposed development. This goes against the intent and current residence of Pembroke Pines who pay taxes and enjoy being part of the community." I have an email from Gutierrez 8714. "Hi to the Pembroke Pine City Commissioners. I live in Silver Lakes in Pembroke Pines, west of 75, near Pines and 178th. I am 100% opposed to these townhomes being built on Pines and Dykes. Pines Boulevard is by far oversaturated with businesses and residences, which already cause a horrible traffic congestion problem. Driving on Pines Boulevard at any time during the day is nightmare. Building more residents is not going to help the situation. This project should be stopped immediately. Instead, what we need is more parks and passive recreation areas so that all the residents may live here and enjoy the neighborhood." Ms. Bronzick also sent in an email, but since she spoke on the record, we'll put that into the written record. I also have an email from Patricia Mosellas, who also spoke on the record and supported, and her will go into the written record. "I am writing in support of this item on your December 2nd agenda for the Pines Village Market. I was hopeful to join your meeting virtually this time, but in case I have to work late, I wanted to express my feelings. I am in favor of this project compared to what has previously been discussed. I like that the developer wants to work with the neighbors and hope that you will once again approve this. Oscar Bowen, 1432 Southwest 158th Avenue." Good evening. This is an email from Boulevard Rodriguez. "I am writing to support the Pines Village application. Please accept this letter as my voice of support. I feel that the application is in line with what was originally proposed, and the additional number of units will not negatively affect the neighborhood. We need housing choices, and the supply and demand are causing homes to be unaffordable. When we agree happily to not have a bus depot, we know and accept it residential. This developer has offered concessions that will benefit the neighbors, and it's right to accept the slight increase in homes. Please keep the bus depot away." I have an email from Desmond Yikey. "I am writing in regards to the application for townhomes by Lennar in our neighborhood. Normally, I would not get involved and just watch to see what happens, but this time I felt it was important to add my voice. There is a phrase called nimby, not in my backyard. That's how I felt about a bus depot or other potential uses, not in my backyard. Are 30 to 40 more units going to even be noticed? I don't think so, especially compared to the alternative. And honestly, the concessions offered by far make up for it, traffic and drainage improvements that certainly would not have been provided in another scenario. Please use your common sense and allow this so that we don't start all over again." I have an email from Donnie Black, 15613 Southwest 16th Street. "I had planned on attending the virtual meeting tonight, but I'm going to have to stay at work and can't make it. Please admit these comments into the record. For the record, I think this fuss is silly. We sold the land to develop residential properties. This is what we are getting. This is business, and their request is not going to make any drastic changes. Let's not go backwards. As a longstanding resident of Pembroke Pines, I do not have a problem with this." I have an email from Miguel Guerrero, 1141 Southwest 147 Terrace. "After watching the previous meeting regarding the residential application called Pines Village Market and hearing a few neighbors complain about traffic impacts, I decided to write in and express my support. I believe the few additional homes will not bring the heavens crashing down upon us. And in comparison to a bus depot, this seems like a much better choice protecting our property values and quality of life. There are neighbors who support this and feel it's appropriate. Thank you for your service and please support." I have an email from Judith Gray to speak on the project. I believe she's trying to enter via the chat. Mayor, that concludes the comments that we have via written comments. These will all be written into the permanent record.
Thank you, Mr. Stam.
We have one more person that has wanted to speak.
Okay, one more person. Mr. Benioff?
Thank you, sir. Judith Gray, you will be unmuted. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't know what happened. It was, you guys could not see my hand raised, but, okay. My address is, my name is Judith Gray. My address is 1433 Southwest 158th Avenue, Pembroke Pines 33027. I spoke on this project a month ago also, and again, I just want to repeat what I had told you, that I feel that this is something that would benefit. My husband and I were thinking of downsizing, and it's not only the cost of the home, but it's everything that comes with a bigger home. The utilities, electricity, and the maintenance on the lawns. This is all beneficial. A townhouse enables people on a fixed income to be able to afford to live in a smaller place and still stay in the community that they like. And also, it also benefits small businesses in the area. I feel that that's something that they haven't really spoke about tonight. It's a benefit for the small business to have a group in their community that will be able to service them. Basically, that's my comments for tonight, and I hope that you support this project and take in consideration the needs of people in their community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've discussed this in great length. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor, I'm sorry. This is Cyphal. I do have one question for Mr. Mealy, which I don't think has ever been answered by a representative-
Okay, final question, Commissioner Cyphal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mealy, I've heard it said tonight, and I've never, and I, just from residents, and I have not heard anything from you. And I know it's been brought up a number of times by residents in their discussions. What are you, I know when we were talking originally at the 125 single family homes, I believe the starting prices for them were going to be over $400,000. I'd like for you to represent to the folks tonight, what are the prices for these townhomes going to be?
So they will, can you hear me okay? Yeah, they will begin in the mid $300,000s and go up from there. So those are the anticipated prices.
Hi, Mr. Mealy, what do you consider, what do you consider a mid 300? Are you looking at 350, 375? What is the number?
From 350 up.
350 up, and has that been considered affordable for what these folks are looking for? Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor?
Point of order, Schwartz. Point of order.
I'm sorry? No, we're gonna go, we're gonna go on. We've discussed this in great length. We've discussed this in great length. City-
Mayor, this is not the time to pull a quick vote. I have a question for the applicant.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, can I hear me?
If you don't yell, I can hear you, sir.
Okay, well, Vice Mayor, you took a long time, and I allowed you to do that. Everybody got their chance. We are now going to proceed.
I have a point of order for the applicant. I have a question for the applicant. Mr. Mealy was given an opportunity, Mr. Mealy was given an opportunity to rebut a question, and he was given the opportunity by you as the chair, sir, to wrap up at the end. We have not heard from Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Mealy, do you need to respond, or are you satisfied?
Just very quickly, Mayor, I'll make my response very quick. We heard a lot of concerns about traffic. We have to compare what we're proposing to build to what's already approved. And we've shown that there's less traffic with 165 townhomes in the morning and afternoon rush hours than with 125 single-family. Secondly, we've talked about drainage. We have an increased amount of open space from our proposed plan as to the approved plan, which is better for drainage. And we've already talked about the drainage improvement we've put in. So I agree that traffic is a concern. But if traffic is a concern, that would dictate, that would lead you to approve the matter, because we have less traffic with the proposed development than the approved. I think many of the callers or the people giving input are comparing the proposed development to a vacant piece of property, and that's not what it is. It's an approved project, and we're proposing to amend it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Me- All right, City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyphal?
No.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
All right, thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner. The permanent number for the record, the item passes is 1953, 1953. That's item number 15.
Thank you. Read item 16 to the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, with your permission, please. Item number 16 is proposed Resolution Number 2020-R-48, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the platnot amendment. That's a delegation request for the approximate 27-acre property generally located south of Pines Boulevard and east of Dykes Road, as more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein, known as the United States Postal Service property, authorizing the city administration to take any action necessary to implement the intent of this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Item number 16, 2020-R-48, is on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for item 16?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Good to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? City Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyphal?
No.
Motion.
City Clerk, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Item number 16, it was adopted, and the resolution number for the record, permanent number is 3723.
Thank you, sir. Item 17, please.
Thank you, Mayor, with your permission, if you will. Item 17 is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-R-49, which reads as follows. It's a resolution approving the fiscal year 2020-21 agreement with Broward County, which provides for dispersment of home program funds for the Home Buyer Purchase Assistance Program, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute the agreement for the designation of sub-recipient and dispersment home program fiscal year 2021 with Broward County in the amount of $253,493 flat and associated documents if necessary, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and finally, providing for an effective date.
Castillo moves.
Moved by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second? Commissioner Good seconds it. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. Item 17, call a roll, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good? Vice Mayor Schwartz? Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes. Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. That permanent number is 3724. Next up is item number 18. With your permission, Mayor, Mayor Reed.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. 18 is a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Number 2020-R-51, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, urging the Florida Department of Transportation to fund and to administer complete streets and other localized initiative program projects for local roadways, providing for distribution and providing for an effective date. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. 2020-R-51 is on the floor.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Good. Is there a second?
Second. Castillo.
Second. Castillo, discussion on item 18. Hearing none. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Permanent number is 3725 for the record. Next up is Addendum Number 1 in the permanent agenda book as well. Addendum 1, Mayor, Mayor Reed.
Please.
Thank you. This is a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Number 2020-R-50, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, ratifying the City Commission's November 4, 2020, approval of an amendment to the Property Exchange Agreement between Terra World Investments LLC and the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, to include TA Pines City Center LLC in the agreement, authorizing and directing the mayor and other city officials to execute the deeds and take any other action and all action that may be necessary to effectuate the conveyance of the city-owned parcels as contemplated by the terms of the Property Exchange Agreement, providing for conflicts, severability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number Addendum 1, 2020-R-50 on the floor.
So moved, Castillo.
Moved by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second?
Cyphal.
Commissioner Cyphal seconds the motion. Discussion. Hearing none. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. 19 City Attorney.
And thank you for your indulgence in adding it to the agenda, given the closing, which is coming up shortly. The number is 3726 for the permanent records, Mayor and Commissioner. Next up is number 19. Mayor Reed, Mayor?
Please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. On the regular items on the agenda under the city code, there's a motion to accept Article 2 references definitions in Article 6 references development standards, sections of the Land Development Code update, the backup of which is in the Green Book and online for review as well. I know Mr. Stam is available for questions, to the extent that you would inquire of him or of me either way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion for item 19?
So moved, Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo seconds the motion. Commissioner Cyphal seconds the motion. Discussion. City Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Saipul?
Yes.
Commissioner Good? Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Before you go on, may I ask?
Mr. Commissioner Good, you have something?
I believe for item 18, I voted, did I vote no, and I, um?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I thought I was voting for another item, so can I, can I do a reconsideration so I could have my vote?
Further, further record, Commissioner Good is changing his vote for item 18.
To a yes.
All right, to a yes. All right, for our league representatives, we have some Zoom meetings tomorrow, three of them for the Florida Municipal Investment Trust, the Loan Council, I'll be on those as a Zoom. Uh, then there's a, a Broward Workforce Development, um, meeting, uh, coming up at noon, and the new mayor, Steve Geller, will be addressing it with some other dignitaries, and, uh, we're talking, uh, a mayor's call will be, uh, on Friday as well, uh, to discuss, uh, encourage, uh, to, to discuss enforcement of the new, of the codes and what we're, uh, enforcement of the, uh, EOs that were given by the governor and by the county and by the city. So, Commissioner Saipul, do you have anything else?
No, Mayor, just a busy day and board meeting, and, um, we'll see how everything plays out.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just wanted to get some clarification about the, uh, no vote for Commissioner Good? I believe it was for the addendum one item, 2020-R-50?
Commissioner Good, clarification?
Relating to?
I thought it was, well, he voted no twice. What first no was?
Mayor, Mayor, this is, Mayor, this is Saipul. I have Commissioner Good as a yes on item 19.
Okay, hold on a minute, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Good voted no on item 19, and he also voted, uh, um, was number eight, nineteen, he voted no, that I have, and there was one more, and then the, I believe, the addendum.
Yes, Mayor. I show Commissioner Good having voted no on addendum one, 2020-R-50.
Okay, wants to change that vote to a yes?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't, and I guess maybe my confusion is because I don't have.
Go ahead, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I, I just, what's adding to my confusion is I don't have the addendum, so that's probably part of my confusion, and I apologize for that.
Okay, sorry you don't have that. All right, thank you, Commissioner. All right, Manager?
Yes, Mayor, um, I have one item. Uh, as you may or may not know, on November 30th, the governor, uh, issued another executive order, number 20-276, ratifying and reaffirming his previous executive order, number 20-52, declaring a state of emergency response to COVID-19 public health emergency. This order, uh, provides the following goals, which will be in effect through December, I'm sorry, will be in effect through the remainder of the 2021 school year. It relates to building on successful reopening of schools, promoting parental choice, while ensuring that every student is making adequate academic progress, and providing financial continuity to enable each school district to maintain the full, uh, panoply of services. Now, in order to receive the benefits provided by this order, the City of Pembroke Pines Charter Schools must submit to the Department of Education a spring 2021 education plan approved by the governing board and the sponsoring district that satisfies all of the requirements of this order no later than Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. We do not have a meeting again until December 16th, 2020. But during this time, we will be working with the school board of Broward County to meet the requirements and establish deadline, and the established deadline will present this to the commission, uh, with the final spring 2021 educational plan. We're working on that, it's, uh, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. I would like to recommend, if we could have a brief 10 or 15 minute meeting on December 14th, to give us, working with Broward County Schools, the opportunity to, uh, adhere to all the requirements of this, uh, emerge, this executive order, and bring it back for your approval as the governing board. So if we could select a time on the 14th as a quick X meeting, uh, I would appreciate it to get it done. It would be, we might be hard pressed to get it done prior to that, but we have no choice but to get it done by the 14th.
All right, is everybody okay with the 14th?
Yeah, I'm open, whatever time the manager needs, I'm there for him.
Uh, could we select, say, around seven or 7:30 that evening? It should only take a few minutes as a virtual meeting?
I'm fine.
Nobody has? 14th, right?
Excuse me?
14th.
The 14th.
Monday.
It's a Monday evening, yes.
You know, Charter Academic Village Advisory Board, I mean, it's all, I'm good. All right, what else, Mayor?
All right, so we're confirmed for that. Okay, thank you, we'll put a notice out.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, I have a question for the manager.
Go ahead, Commissioner, Vice Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Dodge, um, I was looking at the proposed calendar for 2021 for commission dates. Um, I appreciate the clerk sending that out. Um, do you have any, um, do you have any, uh, opposition to combine the January meeting like we have done historically? Right now, it's scheduled for the 6th and the 20th.
I, I have no issues with it. If you would like to make it the second week of January and do, uh, combine those two, that would be fine, but that's your decision, maybe you could discuss it at the next meeting.
Uh, if, if, yeah, if that's okay, Mayor, I was, I was thinking the 13th.
We'll discuss it at the next meeting, I think it's a good idea.
All right, thanks.
Mayor?
All right, thank you.
While we're, while we're on that item, I, my calendar says that the meeting schedule for September 15th is Yom Kippur. So, maybe we want to do something?
Visit all of those, Commissioner.
I'm sorry?
I said, we will revisit that when we bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, I, I, I would have thought you'd, you'd have done it before, posting these dates, but okay, look, whatever, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, as I, as I went to schedule it, it came up in my calendar as Yom Kippur.
I understand.
Okay.
All right, all right, Manager?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
City Attorney?
No report to see the Mayor and Commissioner, but thank you for the indulgence.
Thanks, we have an item for Mr. Castillo, item 20, go ahead, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you. This is a motion to redouble city efforts to maintain timely and accurate HOA and community association contact lists, and to ensure emergency contacts with same when emergencies are declared or imminent. In the backup, I've provided you with a, uh, an email that came from a constituent of mine raising this issue. There is in fact an ordinance on this that I sponsored, uh, some years ago, uh, however, we're not, we're not using it. Uh, since my item went on the agenda, the clerk very, uh, helpfully put out an email to, uh, the associations, reminding them that by law, by law, they need to give us emergency contacts for each and every one of their associations. Uh, if, if it's okay, I would like to give the clerk an opportunity to collect those items. Uh, hurricane season is in fact over, so I'd like to give her an opportunity and ask her to please put this back on the agenda February 1st, unless there's some urgent need to discuss it tonight. I think we should give the clerk an opportunity to allow the homeowner associations and the community associations to comply with our ordinance, and then, uh, we can review it in February.
Mr. Dodge? Mr. Dodge?
Yes, Mayor.
What is our, what do we do in an emergency? How do we contact the homeowners associations?
The homeowners association? Well, we maintain it via the list, uh, via email, social media, um, we have several different means of which we do notify them. However, there are many times the commissioners, uh, provide us with projects or ask for us to communicate with them, and, uh, for some reason, they've changed the leadership within it.
Right.
They have new elections, and they do not notify the city of their new members, so communication is going to people who are no longer on their boards. So the, I understand the effort here is to re-enforce and advise the homeowners associations why we need the information, and how, and, and I think it also should be to their, uh, property managers that should be included, uh, because normally, those do not change on an annual basis, and we can get ahold of them, but we have to make greater effort to get that done.
Commissioner Castillo, you want to amend your motion and include the property managers?
Yeah, we could include the property managers. We want, we want to have as many of these as possible. I, I didn't want to get into the ordinance, but we may have to revisit the ordinance. And so what I wanted to do, if it's okay with you, Mayor, is, uh, give the city clerk an opportunity to perform together with the, uh, with the homeowner associations, and then let's take a good, a, a good full look at this on, uh, on, uh, on, in, uh, early February. Uh, very clearly, when there's an emergency, it should be part of our emergency management protocol to advise, uh, these homeowner associations, and part of it is also encouraging them to have their own communication tree within their communities, so that we can, we can amplify the, uh, the messages that need to go out. So that's, let's just, if it's okay with everyone, let's just allow the, uh, the process to unfold, and we'll revisit this in February.
Uh, Schwartz?
Hi, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Dodge, if, if, as long as it will be appropriate, I think, uh, I think the clerk has done, uh, the clerk's office has done, uh, everything they possibly can. It's clear that, um, if we have, if we have boards that aren't up to date, or property management company information that's missing, um, I think collectively, we need to take responsibility for our own district, in making sure that we do our outreach. That being said, I think the Police Department Community Affairs Unit would be the most appropriate place to request this information. It has to do with emergency preparedness. We have a director for emergency preparedness, uh, Chief Justino. I think that's where the email needs to come from, so it doesn't wind up, let's be honest, uh, in, uh, city email spam that a lot of people ignore. So I think if it comes from our police department, I think that's probably the best header. Um, I believe that the, um, the, the social media that PD has been putting out has been extremely effective, uh, and then every now and then, you know, uh, as an elected, I pick up the phone, and I call my HOAs, and remind them that'll be helpful for them to make sure that their list is up to date. So if we do all of our part on February 1st, I think that would be tremendously, uh, helpful.
Okay, uh, City Clerk, do you have your direction?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, um, indulge, if you may indulge me for a moment, I just wanted to share my screen and show the portal on, on the city's website.
Can you make it bigger?
Hold on a moment, please. I just want to show the city's, uh...
Oh, that's me.
Okay.
All right. Don't make me bigger.
Okay. Let me pull up our portal that we provide for the homeowners, homeowners associations to complete.
Okay.
On the form center, on the city's website.
Okay. All right, so we'll bring that up forward, and the, the next meeting, we'll all be in compliance.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, everyone, have a great evening. Thanks, thanks all.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission?